Two thousand twenty-six final but millage rates and proposed final budget public hearing at the Joanne Idlet Jr. T E C. Today is Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and I would like to call this meeting to order. The time is five oh one. I ask God of respect to everyone. Please silence all electronic voices, devices. My voice is too loud. Chris? Also, if you have any material you would wish to share with any board member, please give that to our executive assistant, Mrs. Morey. If anyone is present that's present would like to address the board regarding action item five A, five A only. That is the tax anticipation note on this agenda. Please raise your hand now so I may sign you up to speak when we get to that agenda item. Seeing no hands, anyone wishing to speak to that item will have three minutes? Okay, moving on. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The purpose of the special meeting is twofold. First, we will have two public hearings on the adoption of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six proposed final millage and the final budget, followed by input from the public during the public hearing input portion. Therefore, the school board will consider approval of the proposed resolutions for each and roll call votes. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak during the public hearing portion of the final millage and the budget, as well as on the proposed tax anticipation note, although no one did sign up for that. I'm going to ask for a call to mo- a motion to adopt the orders of the day.
So move.
Okay. And Dr. Jones and Mr. Dyer, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes four zero. Dr. Pasca is not here, and Dr. Moore is on teams, and we have a new person filling in over here on the seat tonight, and that is Mr. Bruce Green, our CFO, which is appropriate for this meeting. All right, so this is a special meeting. We are to focus on the final millage rates and the final budget special meeting, public hearing, and I'm going to recognize Mr. Green for the purpose of this special meeting. Oh, Dr. Moore, sorry. Recognizing you.
Well, thank you. All I really was going to do was was turn it over to Mr. Green, but I appreciate that. So I'll I'll save my appreciations and thanks until after the presentation, but I'll allow Bruce to go through the items and then I'll follow up.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, through the chair. So as the chair mentioned, tonight you'll have five items. You will have a discussion on the ten- uh, final millage rates. You'll then have a public hearing where you'll accept any public input, and then you'll adopt those millage rates via resolution. The second I- second set of items after that is we'll have a discussion on the final budget. You will gavel into a public hearing where we'll take any feedback from the public. After we gavel out from that, then you will adopt a resolution adopting the final budget. The fifth and final item is an action item under the special meeting, not under the public hearings, to consider approval of a tax anticipation note to address cash flow issues as we go along. And in the audience, we do have members of the finance team that have done the yeoman's work in this task, as well as representatives from our bond and finance counselors that have been helping us along the way. And that is the purpose of the meeting.
Thank you, sir. All right, so this item deals with the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six final millage rates. Dr. Moore, have you documented that the public hearing has properly been advertised in accordance with state statutes?
We have.
Okay. We now recess this meeting to conduct the public hearing as advertised. The public hearing is now in session. The time is five oh five. Dr. Moore, are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, and you haven't received any, right?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And the public is invited to address this issue at this time. Is there an individual representing an organization or anyone of his own personal or public interest who wishes to speak? Okay, I will conclude that everyone has had an opportunity to speak. No one has come forward. The announced public hearing on the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six final millage rate has been conducted pursuant to notice an ample opportunity to address the issue has been provided to all. The board meeting is reconvened at this time. It is five oh six. I'm going to call for a motion.
So move.
Dr. Jones, second.
Second.
Mr. Dyer, any discussion on the millage rate? Uh, Dr. Jones.
Just one thing, obviously, we have not had any changes in our millage rates, and I just want to, again, thank our community for our point five millage, and that is the district school tax additional millage. We use that money for our teachers. We use that money for technology, so I just want the community to know that we are very grateful.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Dyer?
Uh, I I'd just like to add that I I think that this budget, even with the millage, when you take away the family empowerment scholarships, it's about a one percent increase. And as I've said many times, I think that we need to do a lot more to support the teachers, the staff, and the leadership of this district, who has given us a high performing, meaning a very financially sound district, and an A district three, uh, three years in a row, who has achieved from thirty-eighth four years ago to fifth in the state, and has a goal of being number one in the state. So I I think that while this budget seems, uh, large, I don't think that it really is giving the incentives or the support to the team in this district who has delivered outstanding results.
Okay. All right, so this is, um, we're voting on the millage rate itself. We have not changed it. It is still point five. We have not increased it. It's been the same. Um, we're being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We appreciate all that you guys do to make sure that all those numbers are in the right order, and I just appreciate the fact that we're able to give our teachers the technology they need and to pay all the teachers what we need to pay them. So at this time, I'd like to ask for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes four zero. And we are now to the approval of the resolution of the adoption of the final millage rates. So there is a resolution, and I, are you going to read the resolution, or do I need to read it, Bruce?
Um, I would just read the, um, the millage rates into the record, if that's okay.
Okay. So that would be the final?
For the, um, for the final millage rates, the required local effort is three point zero zero five zero, the basic discretionary operation, point seven four eight zero, capital outlay, one point five zero zero zero, and additional voter discretionary operating, point five zero zero zero, for a total millage of five point seven five three zero.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call for a motion for approval of the resolution number twenty twenty-six dash oh three, adoption of the final millage rates.
So move.
Okay, Dr. Jones, Ms. Rosario. I'm going to recognize Ms. Morey for a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Pasca is absent. Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Berenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
The motion passes with a vote of four zero. Um, Dr. Moore, would you like to say anything?
No, just very appreciative.
Okay. Now that's the budget resolution. Okay. All right, now we're moving to the proposed budget. Annually, the district is required to prepare and present the annual budget for the upcoming year in accordance with School Board Policy six-two-three-three, along with Chapter two-hundred of the Florida statute. The budget for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six includes the following funds: the general fund, the debt service fund, the capital projects fund, the special revenue fund, which includes federal entitlement grants and other grants, food service fund, the internal fund, which is the district health insurance program, and the enterprise fund, which is the district extended day program. Okay? Dr. Moore, will you speak to this item?
Absolutely, I'm going to defer that to Mr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, through the chair. Um, the total final budget across all funds is four hundred and twenty million, four hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars, or an increase of two point nine five percent as compared to last year's beginning budget of four hundred and eight million, four twenty-six oh ninety-three. As compared to the tentative budget that was brought forward of four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven oh five, eight eighty-one, it's a point four two percent difference from what you adopted during the tentative as we closed out the June books. Adoption of this final budget will ensure that we are in compliance with Florida statute, the Florida Department of Revenue, and the Florida Department of Education.
Okay, could you explain why it went up from the tentative to now?
Yes, so when we're preparing the tentative budget, we have not closed out all of the books for June as well. Um, we didn't have all the information. So last Tuesday at about four forty-five, four forty-six, we received the final capital outlay and debt service numbers, as well as the pension percentages that you need to close out, things like the extended day, which affects the fund balance. So those changes were to roughly about two hundred thousand dollars total, affected all of the funds except for, um, didn't affect federal or debt, but it except the extended day, capital, and general fund.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, this item deals with the proposed two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six final budget. Dr. Moore, have you documented that this public hearing was properly advertised in accordance with state statutes?
I have.
We now recess this meeting to conduct the public hearing as advertised. The public hearing is now in session. The time is five thirteen. Dr. Moore, are there any written responses to the advertised public hearing to be read at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you. The public is invited to address this issue at this time. I will open up the microphone to any individual that is representing themselves or an organization that wishes to speak. The item is the proposed budget. Seeing none at this time, I'm going to conclude that the announced public hearing on the proposed two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six final budget has been conducted pursuant notion and notice an ample opportunity to address this issue has been provided to all. The budget meeting is reconvened at this time. The time is five fourteen. I'd like to call for the motion.
So move.
Dr. Jones?
Second.
Mr. Dyer, any discussion on the proposed budget?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Rosario?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a discussion, but I do have something that I prepared that I'd like to say. Um, I want to begin by thanking Mr. Green, of course, for spending so much time with me, um, going through the budget, and Mrs. Copman, and your entire team, who is always here, um, day and night, on weekends, on Sundays. I mean, it's, it's just incredible, the work that you all are doing. Um, so I just want to thank you all for, for your hard work. Um, I have no doubt that the numbers that have been presented and the work that you all do is, um, not excellent. I, I, I believe that it is. Um, I believe that you all work to be fiscally responsible. Um, I don't have any qualms with that at all. Um, my questions have always been very public. I've been very honest about the process, and that as a board member, being responsible doesn't necessarily mean just being responsible for what is presented to us in a book, but also being responsible within the process as an elected official here. Um, and for me, as a board member, I do not feel a part of that process anymore. I feel like we are given numbers, we're given a budget and said, this is the way that it has to be, and that's it. And I disagree with that because I've been here where we have had no part, and then we've had part, and then now we have no part again. Um, of course, we all have different opinions. I guess that's the beauty of being in this position, but in my heart of hearts, I wish I can separate and vote for the people and then the process, and I can't do that in this case, and it's really just, it's tearing me apart because I don't want to hurt anyone's feelings who have worked so hard, completely transparent here. However, I don't believe that as board members, we have had a critical role in this process. Um, I don't believe that our, we have had a voice in the priorities of the, of the, of the budget, which is by law, um, our right. And so, um, I want you all to know, everyone here, that I wholeheartedly am grateful, Mr. Green, wholeheartedly. Um, with that said, I'm, I'm sure others have different feelings, but for me, um, I just won't be able to adopt the budget for this reason. Hope you all understand that.
Anyone else like to speak? Dr. Jones?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Green, and the entire budget department. I'm one of those that requested extra meetings, and every time I do, Mr. Green, Mr. Copman, Ms. Copman, and, um, last time, our new person in there, Mr. Caswell, just thank you. I look back at our workshops, and I believe there are five workshops where we had budget updates, and every individual meeting as a board member with Dr. Moore and Cabinet and Mr. Green, I was updated on budget, so I feel very, very comfortable with that. I used to be part of site-based budgeting, and we did, as schools, go through the function, object code, and so forth, and that's what a school does. That's what a principal does with zero-based budgeting, and I understand that. And I certainly, um, trust our CEO, our CFO, and our principals to do the job. When we received information on the internal audits, and, Mr. Green, correct me, there were several that had none, several that just had one, and as a high school principal knowing about those audits, that's a very exemplary, exemplary evaluation.
Just for the record, there were eleven with none and six with only one this time. Thank you to the staff sitting in front of you.
I, I didn't have that in my notes.
Had to get the plug in.
And then, um, we'll talk about this later with the tan, how Mr. Green was waiting so diligently to see if that would drop on the interest rate and how that would save us money. I thought, man, there's nothing better. And I want to remind the public, there weren't any taxes raised, property value went up, so our taxes went up. And again, that point five millage for our school district means a lot, and I think we're showing you the desired outcome with the A, and hopefully all schools be an A, and then a number one. So I believe that, um, when you start with the end in mind, and that's an A school district with growth, then we are doing the job for our community when we spend their money. This district, this school district, is accountable for every penny, in the operational, in the capital, in the internal, in the enterprise funds. You can check that on a regular basis. We are responsible. Question, Mr. Green, did we ever receive the fourth count FTE?
We have not received the fourth calculation for last year, which would have been based on the February or third survey. We have not received that yet.
All right, still, still some issues with that, okay. Um, but I just, in general, I'll talk a little bit more when we get to the tan. The work that goes in to, to make this work and putting, I guess, our money where our mouth is, putting that money in the classroom is important, and I just want to remind everybody in the reorganizational chart, we cut seventeen positions from the district, saved one point seven million dollars. We are good stewards of our money. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dyer, you would like to say anything?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say that I feel like we've had a very robust and ample, uh, budget process that's been going on for many months. I think you started it this year earlier than we ever have. Uh, I, I think that one of the things that you see is we can't control our revenue. The only thing we can control is the expense. Uh, when you look at the, at the revenues that come from the state and from the local millage, uh, which is the basic allocation at three point oh five five, uh, mil, uh, there is nothing, we, we have to assess that. That's the basic allocation. If you look at our budget in total, and you look at the funds that we see, receive with the state, because we have high property values, we receive, what, some forty million from the state?
Forty-five million.
Forty-five million. And after you take away the charter schools, which have to be funded from the budget, which are public charter schools, plus the family empowerment scholarships, how much of that forty-five million from the state is left?
Um, nineteen and twenty fi- twenty point four, uh, five point eight.
Five point eight million. So out of the state funds that we get, which sounds substantial, only five point eight million is left for our school district. When you look at what happens, I mean, we have done, y- you talk about getting the bang for your buck and performing. This school district has done it. I mean, you look at what's going on, healthcare was up eighteen and a half percent. Our school budget net after the, the scholarships is only up one percent. I think the school has been very good stewards of the, uh, of the taxpayers' money, and you can compare us to an equal-sized district in Martin County. They have a sales tax, uh, which adds to their budget. Uh, so, uh, I think, uh, they are some fifteen, twenty million dollars more a year than we are. And I, I, I think that the performance that we have gotten, again, three A's in a row, high-performing school district, on a budget that has been kind of under siege from state unfunded programs, well, I guess they are funded, they're funded from us, uh, without, uh, you know, they, they take it away from the school districts, they're kind of defunding public schools, as I've been saying. Uh, I think that this district has performed admirably. They have been able to adjust to the circumstances. Uh, the scholarships last year, I think we had to wind up cutting another seven million dollars from the budget because we actually had more scholarships than the state had estimated in our final budget. We have reacted to that. We have innovated. We now have gone from, I visited a, a school today, it was an F school four years ago, and it's an A school last year. We only have A and B schools in our district. We have done a remarkable job with the taxpayers' money, delivering results, and, uh, again, I think that that is attributable to the, everybody in the school district. They have done a remarkable job, and I think that this budget team has done a fantastic job, too, all of you, having to react to, again, you know, I, the, the, the state, uh, we have to do things in twenty-four or forty-eight hours that they've had a year to do. Uh, they come through with their numbers at the very, very last minute, and then you guys have to react to get it out, to, to meet the state deadline. Uh, what did you have from the last one at four forty-five? You had a couple of days to turn it?
Yeah.
Uh, which is, which is unbelievable, uh, what's been going on. So again, thank you for the job well done from the whole finance team. You guys are remarkable. Thank you to the school, uh, district and the leadership, the teachers, for what they have done in delivering results, and thank you for the taxpayers for continuing to support a, a really fantastic school system that's only going to get better.
Wow. I don't know what else I can add to that. Um, I agree. I mean, fantastic team. Thank you for your hard work and being here on weekends. I saw all your cars. Um, I, I actually have been here for hours today, but running at the last second for this. I did attend yesterday the central coalition meeting, and it was interesting because we were talking about a lot of the problems that other districts were facing. Some of them were the same, some of them were totally different, but we could relate, and that is, we were talking about, um, building new schools and how much the cost is, and how charter schools don't have to make them hurricane-proof, but yet we have to make them hurricane-proof, so they're a lot more expensive. But we also referred to the fact that, like us, other districts have schools that are older, and that we have to repair those schools, and even if your, um, numbers are going down, you still have those state same buildings, and we can't use the impact fees because those are used for new, um, building. I'm, I'm working on that, by the way, impact fee thing. Um, but what I learned was that, um, a lot of them were talking about innovative ways that they were using that money or getting money to do that, to repair their old buildings, and a lot of them were doing taxes. They were doing sales taxes, a lot of them. As a matter of fact, we were the only ones that weren't. And so I, I just want to put it out there that what your team is doing with the money that we receive is, is remarkable, because we're not getting all that extra money that everybody else is getting to do what we need to do. Um, so there might be a time down the road. Um, the other thing is, uh, I was at the county commission meeting today, um, and I spoke to them during a recess about one of the items that refers to schools. I was interested in it, um, but I saw a gentleman that spoke at the last meeting that said that our, that his school taxes are going to kill him, and that he's not going to be able to make, you know, be able to pay them. It's just too much, and the schools are ridiculous. People still don't understand required local effort, and that a lot of that money goes and gets spread out all over the state, um, but they also don't understand that when your value of your house goes up, your taxes follow. And so thank you for making that point, because I think people think that we're raising the taxes, and they don't understand their property values are going up as well. Um, we have a four hundred and twenty million dollar budget right around, so we are the biggest employer, the biggest budget in the county, and I think you'll see from the taxpayers' association, everyone else, they agree that you're doing a great job. And from all the things that you said, Mr. Dyer, and that you said, Dr. Jones, I totally can support this, and the reason why is because we have been a part of this all along, little bits all along. We've had those conversations with the superintendent. We've had individual conversations, and we've had our own conversations about how we need to look at the forecast of our school district, what needs to happen, how we change our schools, how we move, and, and change with the money and the flow. So I agree, we have been a part of this the whole way. I don't understand how a board member can't feel like they're part of this the whole way, um, because we have had those conversations, and all of us have had the opportunity anytime we want. You open your door and allow us to come in, and I appreciate the time that you gave me, and I appreciate everything that you guys do. So thank you all for everything you do. All right, at this time, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the proposed budget for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Three, one, it passes. All right, now we are to the proposed budget amended approval of resolution two zero two six dash zero four for the adoption of the final budget, which includes the approval of the annual finance report dated as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, inclusive of cost report and the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five final budget amendments of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, number ten. Dr. Moore?
Yes.
I'm going to call for a motion on this. Do you have anything you want to say about what I just said?
No, go ahead.
I know it's very late, we are. Okay.
Sorry.
Mr. Green? Anything?
Nope.
Okay, we're good. All right, I'm going to call for a motion for approval of the resolution two thousand twenty-six, two thousand, um, oh, two thousand twenty-six dash oh four for adoption of the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six final budget and approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual finance report dated as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, inclusive of cost report and the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five final budget amendments for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, number ten. Phew. I called for the motion.
So move.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Jones? Mr. Dyer? We need a roll call for this. Mrs. Moore?
Dr. Pasca is absent. Ms. Rosario?
No.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Berenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
The motion passed with a vote of 3 to 1. At this time, we're going to talk about the tax anticipation note, the TAN series 2025. All right. Mr. Green will present this item. The chair will recognize any public speakers, but we didn't have any that came forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as the board discussed, the majority of our funding is through local dollars, which come through our tax revenue, which we generally get in November and December. So the portion, that 5.8 million that's there that comes in every two-week payment, is certainly not enough to operate the school district until December. So our bond counsel and our financial counsel and many of the staff members you see before you, they are constantly running cash flow analysis to see how we can make payroll, how we can keep the operational system operating. And that negative cash flow of about $7.5 million would happen in mid-October without this. So this is a common practice for school districts to address the funding mechanism that the state has in place in the FEFP for school districts. Some school districts might be 75% state and 25% local. They would have the cash flow coming in at the beginning. We're opposite the vast majority local. So what this is, is we put an RFQ out. We got several banks to respond. Wells Fargo was the most responsive bidder when you look at total cost of interest with fees and everything included. We're talking about $147,000 all-in fees. Last time, it was closer to $200,000. We invest it in our Florida Prime as we pay that back by December 18. So during that time, that interest will offset a lot of those costs. Last year, that was around $19,000 total net cost after our investment. As you are aware, we were, had presented a 3.99% interest rate, and you did approve the superintendent's authority to lock in a forward lock agreement. We did not exercise that waiting. And our financial advisor, who's with us today, thank you, John, and Jerry Ford, was pinging me along the way, hey, 3.98. Oh, maybe a 3.97. Do you want to lock in? We waited. So just prior to this meeting started, I met him in the hallway and said, give me a number, and it's 3.93. So we have locked that in today for that TAN, which is outstanding. So we appreciate that. This will be a 15, not to exceed 15 million. It will be executed on the 12th, payback on December 18, and it will help us pay our individuals to operate the school district.
Okay. You might have seen my face when I mentioned TAN, and that's because I'm not happy, not because we, the gentlemen that are here, it's because it's a little frustrating that the money goes to the state from our taxpayers, then it comes to us in dribbles, and the very first cut that we take goes to the charter schools. So they don't have to deal with this, but we have to deal with this. And it makes a shortfall for our salaries, and we have to cover salaries. And so it's not that I don't think we have to do it. I do. It's just frustrating that we have to do it. That's all. All right. I'm going to call for a motion for approval of the resolution. Oh, sorry. Any board discussion on the TAN?
Nope.
We're good. All right. I'll call for a motion for approval of resolution 2026-05, TAN anticipation notes, TAN series 2025. Ms. Rosario?
Second.
Dr. Jones? It's a roll call vote.
Dr. Pasca is absent. Ms. Rosario?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Berenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Okay. The motion passes 4-0. And now we have our closing. Mr. Green, would you like to say anything and thank your team, which we absolutely appreciate, and I know you appreciate it?
I would, and possibly, I mean, if you just barely glanced over where I normally sit, you might see that the white hat is sitting where it truly belongs this evening, and that is with our Director of Finance, Kim Copman, and her staff sitting.
Please put it on, Kim.
Staff sitting behind her. There you go. I knew she'd wear it, too. Now I'll be distracted the whole time with her wearing it. I really, really have living this for as long as I have, but this being the second round, you truly don't know what it is until you are Labor Day, until you're Sunday, until you're Saturday, until you're midnight, until one team gets done, so the next fund can get done, so the next person can get done. They are truly a team. If you go in anytime, you'll see them having breakfast, or lunch, or birthday celebrations together, and that family atmosphere, I think, is what helps them and all of us get through the stressful times. So for them, it's a little bit of a sigh of relief, but we still have more on the annual financial report to finish, and we have a lot to submit. But I just truly, truly appreciate everyone sitting there, and the entire team who couldn't make it for all of their work. And I appreciate board for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Copman. We appreciate all you do, and welcome to Mr. Caswell. And thank you to the entire team. Can't say it enough, I know how hard you work, and I know the hours you've been putting in, especially with these deadlines. I can't apologize on behalf of the state, but I'm going to, I apologize. All right. And in closing, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 5:36.